Hello, we're here. It's fun. Wonderful day. Hey Sarah. Anyway, the boss man is not here, so we gonna have a good time.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Well, good evening, everybody. And we have one item on our work session this afternoon. And that is a building and codes update to talk about some changes we've made with building permits and our numbers, plan review, and then an update on our city detect system. So with that, I will turn it over to our director of building and codes for the city, Buddy Skinner, who's also our chief building official.
Yes.
Welcome, Buddy.
Howdy.
In a minute.
It has. If I can figure out how to make this thing change.
Good luck with that, brother.
All right, here we go.
If you were at last meeting, you know exactly what I'm talking about.
I got. So I want to start off with kind of an update. We met and talked at the work session. We talked about these same numbers, but I want to kind of give you an update of what we're seeing year to date right now. So the next five charts that we're going to look at are from January 1 through the end of August permit numbers. So this is applications received. So as you can see, right now, we are about 400 ahead of where we were this time last year and the previous five years as far as application intake.
Okay, so we're gonna have to put up some tall rolls.
Now, this is all applications received.
Okay.
So we're ahead of where we were the previous five years in applications received to the building department.
Where do you attribute that to, Buddy?
We have some, we'll talk about Hurricane Helene in a little bit. We've had some, you know, some unexpected reveals there. It could just be growth. I mean, it's hard to say. The numbers are what they are. We're just doing a lot more business right now than we're this time last year or the previous five years. Another area where we're leading previous five years is in permits processed. As application numbers go up, naturally, permit number is going to go up as well. So we're not only ahead in permits, we're also ahead in, or applications also ahead in permits. Not quite as drastic difference, or a couple hundred ahead of the busiest year, which was 2021, this yellow column. But I think we're roughly about 800 ahead of where we were last year. So that's a pretty big difference. Another area we track is inspections. These are our day-to-day inspections that the building department's doing. As you can see, we're ahead of the previous five years there as well. We're about 3,500 ahead of where we were last year. Last year, there was a bit of a dip. This year, we're rocking and rolling. And y'all feel free to interrupt me if you'd like.
We'll hold to the end.
Okay, sounds good, sounds good. The other item we'd like to look at are permit fees. Now, this, like we started with, this is year-to-date current totals for the previous five years, so this is through the end of August. Our permit fees are a little bit ahead of the previous two years, a little bit behind 2021 and 22. There could be a number of issues there. Permit fees are driven by cost of construction. It's depending on what type permit it is. If it's electrical, plumbing, mechanical, it's based on the fixtures or breakers or work that's being installed. But that's what the numbers are. We're just, we're doing pretty good from what I can tell. The next is cost of construction. This is the valuation that contractors give us on their permit applications when they apply for a permit. So as you can see, we're, right now, we're ahead of where we were in the previous three years, but behind in, from the figures of 2020 and 2021. What we saw in those years were a huge influx of cost of construction. Materials went really high. So that could be the reason why it was so high then and not as much now, but it's really hard to tell. I mentioned a second ago that we want to talk briefly about Hurricane Helene. So the permitting that we did following the hurricane has affected our applications, our permits, and our inspections. One thing that the manager decided to do once, as soon as the hurricane happened, we have to do inspections on these properties. But Shannon wanted to not charge for those permits. So to give you an idea of what we've done so far, we issued 204 applications so far for storm damage repairs. That could be anything from services being ripped, electrical services being ripped off the building, to, you know, whole bedrooms or half a house being rebuilt, and a couple of rebuilds. As long as it's going like-for-like, we're doing that at no fee. If they're doing an addition and a like-for-like replacement, we're only charging for the addition work. These applications have led to over 700 inspections, 768 inspections we've done on restoration repairs. And the total valuation of Helene repairs of almost 12, 12 and a half million dollars. So there's a lot of money going into, and all those monies have been calculated into the charts that we looked at earlier. I don't have a number of the permits that we've issued, but typically, most permit, most applications will have two to four permits on renovation, just depending on what the scope of the renovation work is. The biggest thing I wanted to bring up today, and it's, it was a topic of our conversation at the work session, was our plan review and some things that we were trying to do to decrease the amount of time that plans were staying in the city, trying to get those things out quicker. So I want to give you some statistics and show you some charts on what we're doing as far as plan review department. Now, plan review is not just building codes. It stretches out to zoning, planning, fire. Depending on the type project it is, it could be touching a lot of different city departments. Unlike the other charts we looked at, the 2020, 2000 through 2024, or 2020 through 2024 are total year-to-date totals. They're not, they're not up until August. 2025 is year-to-date, so this is through mid-August, I think, is when I ran this report. So you can see, we're approaching tying the numbers from the previous years. But kind of keep this in mind as we continue to talk about our plan reviews, because what we're going to talk about in a little bit is we've actually reduced the number of times that plans are coming through the city. So we've reduced the number of revisions, and yet our plan review totals are still pretty high, which means we're seeing a lot more projects. Had we been cycling these things through, those numbers would be a lot higher. So we're doing ourselves a favor. Days in review, this is a topic that we brought up. And initially, from the work session, we talked about reducing the number of days a project was in review. For our residential projects, we reduced them from 14 days down to 12 days. A two-day reduction doesn't seem like a lot, but it is when you cut out a weekend, because these are working days versus a calendar day. We also reduced commercial reviews from 21 days down to 19. Again, that doesn't seem like a lot, but it is. The things that we group into the 12-day reviews are any residential project other than multifamily. Commercial additions, commercial alterations are all in the 12-day review. The 19-day are going to be your new commercial projects and your multifamily projects. And this chart is broken down by reviewing departments. So you can see all the reviewing departments that are engaged in these reviews, and you can see the number of days that they are doing it, or average number of days it's taking to get those reviews completed. I am really impressed with our residential and our commercial alterations. All of the reviews are getting done in less than 10 days. That's a huge hurdle, and I don't know how it's happening, other than it's just getting done. The commercial reviews are also doing really good. We're less than 16 days, which is three days shorter than our goal. So we're doing really well in the number of review days, or number of days on average it's taking to get a review completed. As a review progresses through our process, the initial submittal is a revision zero. That's the first time we see it. The first time it's resubmitted for a reevaluation or denied and set back in is revision one. So you can see, we got revision one, we got revision two. So that revision two would be the third pass-through that a plan has been submitted for review. So one thing I wanted to, the main reason I want to show you this and compare it to only 2024, there's no revision five plus in 2025. We've completely eliminated that fifth or more revision coming into the city. We've really reduced revision four. So that's going to reduce the number of times, the first chart we talked about, the number of reviews we've actually got to do. That's huge on our reviewers, being able to, it could be that we're getting better plans. It could be that we're doing better at communicating what needs to be repaired to the plan so that we're not having to see them so many times. But I got to noticing that the revision zero, which was the first submittal, and revision one, I saw some really high numbers. And I said, let's see what it looks like just in the first and second submittals. What's the percentages on how quickly these reviews are getting out? And it's really impressive numbers, in my opinion. I mean, just a residential addition, 77% of the drawings that we're getting are getting approved within the first submittal or the first revision. As you can see, going down through there, 93, 84, all of these percentages are beating the previous numbers. 96% on residential alterations getting approved the first time. 100% of multifamily getting approved within the first or second revision. New townhouses and new single-family, they're both running at average around 90%. That's really big. That's getting our contractors started early.
Okay, before we do any of this, let's stop here for a second, because the other ones not quite on the same topic. I wanted counsel to see if they have any questions on the first part of Buddy's presentation. Councilmember Gibson.
I don't know if this falls into this part of it, but I do want to have some kind of intel on properties that have sat dormant since damage from Helene. You know, where are we on that? Where's policy on that? I'm not too, I'm not as concerned by people who are making a good faith effort to do the repairs, which is the vast majority, but there, I think, are some that it's not going anywhere. And then on Helene repairs, rebuilds, we're forgiving fees on like-for-like, right? You chopped off half your house with a tree, you replaced it just as it was. If you replace it just as it was with an addition, you'd pay the fee on the addition portion, but not on it. I don't understand the process on how that waiving of fees, how we're ensuring that that fee waiver is benefiting the property owner versus the contractor. So contractor is the one that's submitting the permit. They've got full permit fee included in their bid to the homeowner. I don't, I've never had the fortune of a contractor writing me a check, but maybe that's happening. So how's that happening?
It's whoever, whoever's applicant.
Which is gonna be the builder.
Yeah, it could be a homeowner, but in 99% of the time, in what I'm seeing, it's the contractor. And you're right, the contractor will get the benefit of it.
And does the contractor get reimbursed?
No, so we're just not charging the fee.
At the front end?
On the front end, that's right. Now, I will say this, we've been very vocal, Councilmember Dow, since the very beginning of Helene, and have communicated multiple times to the public that we are not going to charge repair fees for people that were repairing their homes, that were victims of the storm. And so we would want our community to hear that, you know, if they are submitting a permit for a repair due to Helene, that we are not charging that permit fee so that they don't get scammed or get taken advantage of. Because the fact of the matter is, is that we did not want, in the middle of a crisis and dealing with people who went to, you know, got up that morning thinking everything was just going to be another Friday, and realizing that it was not going to be another Friday, that they are then, not only are they, you know, losing their home or a portion of their home, that they are not getting charged, they are not going to be charged by the city for that.
By the city. I mean, to be clear, no doubt in my mind, the city did the right thing in that policy. I just am not fully convinced that the benefit has been passed on to the consumer, and it sounds like by process, we're not really in the middle of it when the permit applica, in other words, it's not a reimbursement of the fee. It's an upfront waiver.
That's right.
Okay, all right.
Which is something that they can, we hope they be.
So, and the way a property owner protects themselves is to have a final bill, you know, a final accounting of each charge, and if there's a permit fee on there, that would not be on there if it was Helene there.
That's exactly right.
The work is done in the city and now they're based upon that.
So question, you said that there was the increase in permit applications, like you said, 400?
Yes, sir.
Right, and you had 200 applications that were Helene-oriented, Helene-related.
Yes.
Does that 200 come out of that 400, or is that 200?
Yeah, that would be, that would be 204 in addition to the 196 that, you know, we weren't, you know, we weren't expecting those.
Okay, so we're looking at, taking out Helene, taking out the applications.
Still 200.
About a 200 increase in permits. Do we have a breakdown whether or not that's on the percentage of commercial, residential?
It not, I mean, I can pull that, any data I can pull. If you're interested in finding that, I can send it to you.
I am, and I'm also interested to know if there is a geographic correlation between where those are coming from.
We can look at it. We can look at the growth across districts.
Yes.
Before council districts.
That's gonna be my question. Yeah, it'd be helpful.
Now, there is a heat map in our GIS system that shows you year by year where the development is, and I think it breaks it down from commercial or residential.
I'm far too lazy to do that, so please.
It may give you, it may give you a better visual than the report that I can produce, because it's a.
I'll try to.
I'm still too lazy.
I can see, I'll send, I'll send it to you.
Static, static, perhaps would be helpful.
Self-awareness is a very good way to have.
Any other questions in this bank?
Buddy, I'm impressed. Are you doing, are you permitting, are you doing more permits in less time with same staff?
The, yes, I have, as far as the permit issuance, I have the same staff I had a couple of years ago. It may be in the very near future that I have to look at adding staff. It's just not enough hours in the day to do all that processing. Now, the plan reviews, I don't know from other departments who's added staff and who hasn't. I know that we haven't added any staff since the, well, I don't think we've added any staff, plan review staff, since the work session. I think there may be some on the horizon, but as far as I know, I don't think we've added any staff.
We added inspectors, two years ago. We added one inspector position, but since, so just to kind of bring that back to what Buddy was talking about, since we talked about this with council retreat and reducing the review times to see what those results would be, there have been no stat added to any of the reviewing departments. And so that's all been done by existing teams and existing staff. And I would just say that I would really, you know, Buddy and I met with the reviewing teams on this back in early February, maybe late January, and explained that we'd like to see what we could do to make an improvement in the turnaround time on permit reviews. And I think that I would like to publicly thank Buddy and all of our reviewing staffs for this effort, because they, the data is showing that they are making a significant improvement. And I think our review times were already good before, but we always get complaints, I mean, you're always gonna get complaints about it. But I would stack up our review times with any other city based on the information that has been provided today in terms of just the amount of permits that we're reviewing and what it takes to review all of our plans. And I think that they have made a concerted effort, the entire team has made a concerted effort to see those numbers drop in review times. So thank you, Buddy, and thank you to all of our reviewing teams, which includes planning, engineering, fire. I think that it's important that we thank them for their extra efforts to make this happen, because we know that this is something that we would frequently hear about in the past, is can we get permits through the process quicker?
One, if you don't mind. The, I was impressed with cutting the time in mechanical from nine to six, or nine to three. Are they doing something any more special than anybody else? Can we learn from that?
I can actually take all the credit for that. Because it was a reporting issue. They, it was when they received the reports, we made it so that they got reports sooner in the week, they were able to do the review, and it came up like three days off of it. So, yeah, it wasn't anything I did, they just got the information quicker, it made them more efficient.
Perfect. That's right.
It's, you know, we, that's one of the things we do, we just find ways to be more efficient with what you've got.
And Buddy, if you don't mind telling counsel about our turnaround time for inspections?
We're still operating under 24 hours. So there's several jurisdictions out there that may be weeks behind on getting inspections done. We're doing it in 24 hours. Now, sometimes we'll do the parade effect, you know, we may push out a day or two, but our guys are going back in there and beating that number down, so that we're doing 24 hours.
Thank you, Buddy. Councilmember Brasington.
So let me just see if I'm thinking about this the right way. That one chart you showed where 77%, 75% in the, in zero revision or first revision is cleared through, but we're also talking about the average time of all being reduced down to 12. I guess where I'm trying to go with this is, have you, if it's the average down to 12 days, then presumably the 25% they're getting multiple revisions are taking longer and are dragging what otherwise would be a shorter average towards 12?
So what happens, is that, that's one review, is that 12 days or 14 days is, or 19 days is set up on one review? So one pass-through.
So it's not clearing?
Uh-uh. Yeah, that's just the time we spend in looking at that review.
Regardless of which pass it is.
If a revision comes back through, then that's a whole nother 12 days.
I got you.
So it doesn't get any faster, because we work off of submittal date. So once it comes in, is submitted to us, we set, we start the clock at that.
It would be fast, but by the time I get sent the fourth time, you would think that you've dotted a lot of eyes, but, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, we've had them come through five, six, seven times. I mean, it's.
I'm just saying, I would think that the first review would be the longest, the most substantial, but by the time you get the fourth review, unless they're wholesale changing stuff.
Right. And it goes through all the reviewing departments. Sometimes reviewers don't have to delve as deep into the plans the third time as they did the first time, so that does make sense, and it would drop that number down.
Okay.
Yes.
Anyway, you maybe follow the concept I was getting at, which is three out of, three out of four, the ones done best first or quicker, we ought to be celebrating and touting them, but.
Yeah.
Thanks.
One thing you mentioned I didn't follow up on was the listing of Helene damaged properties are still out there. We have been slack on proper enforcement of those properties. I don't know when the proper time is to start doing that, but I can definitely talk with Shannon and see.
I mean, yeah, I'd like y'all to talk about and come, I mean, it's very, you need to be very understanding of people's predicaments, but we're coming up on one year. So in one year, I would say, as a minimum, you should have some kind of plan for addressing it. You shouldn't just let it sit. And we've had some properties that, you know, went into demo, whatever, but I think we need to get kind of a policy set down that sounds, is a strong word, but slack is not the word I want to hear either. And so I think it's worth a staff recommendation, I think, is what I'm looking for.
Yeah, I think we just try to be very understanding of people's situations, and we've had a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of stories out there, and so, but Buddy and I can talk about what that looks like over the next couple of months. Like you said earlier, the vast majority of our people that were significantly damaged by Helene are in the process of already making their repairs.
I think so, yeah.
It's just, so this is not the vast majority of people, this is a, this would be a small, a small group.
There's still tarps on those.
But they might have made progress.
That's right.
Towards, no doubt, you're seeing plenty of those blue tarps. I'm just looking for, have they made some progress?
Right.
From where we were on September 28, you know, from where they are now, and that, especially, especially if we have property that is owned by someone who is not living here, that's an out-of-town owner anyway.
Is that impacted by FEMA?
Some of it is, and I think Patricia wants to speak to that.
I was gonna say, this sounds relevant, you know, the resiliency department, I think they, I know they put out their public comment, I think the public comment has ended, you know, but they're gonna have a master contractor for the funds that were awarded to each of the counties through the South Carolina in the resiliency.
Okay.
So that's just now happening, they're.
I have a friend who just got a check yesterday from FEMA.
We're still, we're still, we know proprietors that are still dealing with FEMA. We've been, we've got a local church that's had a situation that has been, is still in conversation with FEMA about a situation, so, and so, yes, we can check on Helena, and we can report back on that, an upcoming work session. Okay, we're running just a couple minutes behind, so Buddy, I might ask you to quickly through our next section, but I don't want to keep you from being able to complete your presentation.
Certainly. The last thing we'll talk about is a program that we started back when John McDonough was here. It's called City Detect, and what it does is it uses artificial intelligence to identify code violations in pictures. It, we determined that the best way for us to gather pictures would be cameras mounted on our waste vehicles, public works, waste vehicles. So these vehicles run all the city routes, picking up trash throughout the city, and there's a camera mounted on top of these vehicles that captures images of each lot as these vehicles are running down the, down the street. These, these images are then run through an artificial intelligence, and we set the parameters on what the artificial intelligence looks for. It could be boarded-up structures, it could be tarps on roof, it could be overgrown grass, and we set the parameter on the height of the grass. It could be busted windows, roof damage. There's just a number of different things that we set the parameters on what this intelligence looks for. It takes that information and gives it back to us in several different formats. So this is just a high-level map, it's just like our GIS map. It shows little green lines for all the routes that the garbage trucks are running throughout the city, and then it identifies the areas of code violations in either red, yellow, or different color codes for different things. The little lines are street segments. So if there is illegal dumping going on at this location, it's going to identify it by a street segment, and we can, we can, we know where that mess is at. It also identifies parcels that it sees as potential code violations, and we can, this is an interactive map, so we can click on those items and actually see a picture of what the artificial intelligence is seeing.
It's Will's house, isn't it?
So let me skip this. So it gives us two different things. It gives us a map report and also gives us a list report. And it, we can make it show us only blights in different categories, so we can see like a one-to-five blight, we only want to see threes and fours. It will show us just threes and fours in this list report, and it's interactive as well, so we can click on that item, blow up the picture, and then we can determine whether or not we actually want to go look at that, or if it's, I mean, it'll pick up a dumpster with trash sticking up out of it. So we don't need to go see that, because it's in a dumpster already. But it also picks up a pile of tires and a mattress on the side of the road that we need to put a per quarter to have public works go take a look at it, pick it up. Now, we're not actually using the software yet, we're still kind of in a testing phase of it, just trying to make sure it's working for what we need. And we're waiting on network keys that are able to push the ones we determined that we need to go look at, we can push it into our coding portal software, so we can actually create a case to go investigate to make sure it's a violation. So we're just kind of using this system as another set of eyes. It also builds a database for us, so we'll have pictures over a period of time. So this is an example of a structure that it picked up, and you see a little bit of a blue tarp up there on the top right. You can't see the gutter, but it identified a gutter that was hanging off the house, and also the grass is overgrown. So these are three things that violate, and you see on the left, it has a overgrown driveway, structural gutter, and roof tarp. So these are three things that it picked up on in that report. Now, this was in June of 2025. So in July, you can see the grass has been cut, but we've still got a tarp, and we've still got an issue with a gutter. So we're able to look back through these pictures and see a progression of either code violations, or we can see that there's work actually been done to clean up the property. Now, I don't know if we had a case on this one or not, they may have just cut the grass on their own, but that's just a way that we can identify these things. that's just a, a way that we can identify these things. Um, and we have used it, this is what we used when we went around and dri, drove all the city streets with these cameras on the vehicles following Helene to identify where these piles of debris were at. So, uh, they actually came down and mounted these cameras on top of the vehicles, so we could do that identification. Um, I'm just gonna skip through that. Does anybody have any questions?
That's all.
I think that it was, that it, what we really found that was that it was helpful around Helene, um, and, and how it was additional as to help, in the first few days following Helene, it was, you know, trying to put as many staff out on the streets as possible. And, and this was very helpful to us throughout the first couple of months in particular of Helene. The other thing is that we, we get a lot of illegal dumping, dumping, and it is able to help us identify when we had an illegal dumping. There's one street in particular where it's not the property owner, we know, but we, we know that we get illegal dumping on that street, and we've been there several times, and they just put, they dump it on the street. And so this is a way for us to know about it, so we can send public works over to pick it up and clean it up before we get a complaint from the neighbors. So, yes, Councilmember Gibson.
Yes, and just to be clear, though, you guys are putting human eyes on these.
Absolutely. Yeah, we, yeah, it's just.
Yeah, helps identify, I got you.
Where we might have to take problems, but as soon as, just like Buddy said, as soon as you look at it, you may, it may be trashing a dumpster, where you're like, oh, well, that's just, you know.
Yeah.
Okay. Who's technology? What, what's the company that's doing it?
City Detect is the name of the company. Um, and they, they gave, given me some specifics on the type of AI it is. It doesn't hallucinate, which it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, doesn't make up its own images. It's, it's looking at an image and determining.